A little bit fast. I wait until 7 o'clock so that I don't start inappropriately. I do want to make an announcement that's not part of the meeting itself. The town is having a Holocaust memorial meeting for the proposal for the Holocaust memorial on Troy Road. And if anyone is here for that, that meeting is actually at the Niskiuna High School next door. Okay, at this time, I'd like to call the May meeting of the Niskiuna zoning board of appeals to order. If we could please call the roll.
Mr. Frary?
Here.
Mr. Latif?
Here.
Ms. Osterlich?
Here.
Mr. Daley?
Here.
Mr. Green?
Here.
Mr. Hoak?
Here.
Chairman Goodman?
Here.
Quorum is present. I would ask if the first order of business would be approval of the minutes from the February meeting. There's any one who'd like to make a motion with regard to the minutes?
Before we do that, Mr. Chairman, while I appreciate the change in name, can you please make the members present to be Keith Frary instead of John?
Oh.
That was my uncle.
Any other corrections to the minutes? Anyone like to make a motion?
Motion to accept the minute for February 27, 2019.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there discussion on the motion? Hearing none. If we could please call the roll.
Mr. Frary?
Yes.
Latif?
Yes.
Ms. Osterlich?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Hoak?
Yes.
Chairman Goodman?
Yes, motion is carried. If we could please call the first case.
The appeal of Michelle Lansing at 1468 Via Del Mar, Niskiuna, New York, for a variance from Section 220-25B1A of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskiuna to construct a six-foot fence on the property noted above. The property is located in the R2 medium-density residential zoning district. Fence Section 220-25B1A permits the maximum height for fences located in the front and side yards to be four feet. As proposed, a six-foot-high fence is located in the front and side yards, therefore a two-foot height, fence height variance is required. Nine notices were sent out, one response. And the response is, "My name is Georgiana Carney, and I have lived at 1465 Via Del Mar, Niskiuna, New York, for 30 years. I'm writing to you regarding the fence requested by Michelle Lansing at 1468 Via Del Mar. The fence in question is replacement for a six-foot fence that Co-op put up many years ago to separate its commercial parking lot from the Via Del Mar and Lansing house. If you look at the fence, the good side is on the side facing our street in 1468 Via Del Mar, and the back side is facing the Co-op parking lot. The fence is not something new to our neighborhood, and it has been in existence for 30 years I have lived here. In recent years, it has been seen some severe deterioration in the fence. Michelle and her husband have taken the lead in trying to get the fence repaired. To their credit, they have taken on repairing the fence themselves as best as they can over the last few years. Michelle and her husband have called in fence people to see if the fence can be repaired and have been told it needs replacement. Instead of making Michelle go through and paying for the zoning appeals and building permit, I think the town owes her a thank you for being willing to take this on and removing an eyesore to Old Niskiuna and Via Del Mar. I also believe anyone trying to separate their home from commercial property should be allowed a larger fence. Please allow these people to replace the six-foot fence that has been in existence for over 30 years I have lived here. Thank you."
Okay, if the applicant could please come forward and state your name and address and what your application is and the reasons for, for the record.
Sure. My name is Michelle Lansing. I live at 1468 Via Del Mar. Yeah, you want me to read the answers to the questions that I provided or?
Summarize.
Okay.
And then the board can ask questions if they wish.
Sure, absolutely. Okay. My house abuts the parking lot for the Co-op grocery store. I have lived there for 19 years. The fence was there when I purchased the home. As the letter writer had stated, the nice side faces me and the other side faces the Co-op. For the past few years, it has just seen severe deterioration with the storms that we've had. And knowing it's at least, to Ms. Carney's point, 30 years old, as you can imagine, it's seen deterioration. My husband and I have tried to mend it as best we can, and over the past few years have tried to work with the Co-op leadership, both the general manager and the board. At one point, we had the Co-op board had agreed to split the cost of the fence with us. Then a new board came on, and they decided that they were not interested in having any type of ownership over the fence. So after some consideration, my husband and I have just really decided we just want a fence up. So we have agreed to move the fence completely into our property. The existing fence is part on my property and part on the Co-op's property. We found that out when the Co-op had property lines drawn three years ago because a tree from the Co-op's parking lot property fell into my backyard, and they wanted to make sure it was their tree before they took care of it. So at that time, we found out that, in fact, the fence is on both properties. Because of the tree line, the way it is, and the number of the trees that are on the Co-op property, we can't just put a fence back up on that existing line, which really wouldn't make sense since it's on two properties anyway. So we're going to have to move the property either a little bit into the Co-op's property, but again, they said they weren't interested in doing that, or move it further into ours so that we can get a line. As you might be able to see in some of the pictures that I sent, there is a significant height difference between the Co-op's property and my own. So if a car is parked facing my home in the lot, a six-foot fence does not cover the entire car. And if I am in my kitchen, which looks out at the Co-op parking lot, I still see the lights and everything from the cars. So even a six-foot fence isn't a significant mask to the light and the noise, but it's something, and we definitely would be appreciative if we were able to put the six-foot fence up.
Question for counsel. The application said that the Co-op would be allowed to have a 10-foot fence under their zoning. Is that correct?
So that is correct.
Okay. Had you asked the Co-op if they put up a fence and that you paid for it? Would they do that? Because then you could have a higher fence without a variance.
We asked.
So they won't even do that at your expense?
No, they're not interested. We offered to even ask if we could have the property line redrawn and buy like a couple feet of their property so that we could put the fence up and not eat into our yard like we're going to have to. But they said that would be too costly. So we think this is the fairest for us, if possible. And, you know, we're going to put up a nice fence. We plan on having a good neighbor fence so both sides look the same. And, you know, my husband and I take good care of our yard, and we'll take good care of the fence. And, you know, I'm hoping that the Co-op will take good care of their property on the other side once they see a new fence has come up.
May inquire, you're basically going to be replacing an old crepit fence?
Yes.
With a nice new fence?
Yep, and we just?
And it's?
It's on the same spot.
Right, same size?
Same exact size.
And you're just moving it a little bit in on your property?
About two feet in.
Right, and you're doing this at your and your husband's expense?
Yes.
Thanks.
Just a couple of points of order. I want to make sure that this is on the record, so, and I was not aware of this, so I will ask Mr. Hess to elaborate. So the Co-op, because it's a commercial property, could have a 10-foot fence without a variance, correct?
Correct. So even though the Co-op is in the Town Center Overlay District, it would be allowed to have a 10-foot fence in this location?
And?
As a commercial property.
The fence that was there that's falling down, you said that's where in relation to your, is it on the Co-op property, your property, or both?
So the front half, there's two sections that are falling down. The front half that's falling down is on my property. The back half that's falling down, which is close to where the Co-op keeps a donation bin and a picnic table, if you're familiar, that is technically on the Co-op's property. Almost smack dab in the middle of the fence is where the two properties meet, and then the fence. It's just a odd property line.
So it's not a, it's not a uniform or a squared-off property line, it's?
Yeah. And I don't know, because obviously I wasn't with the property when the fence was up, I don't know if they were even aware of the property line at the time.
They, meaning the Co-op.
Whoever put the fence up. Yep.
And you've been there 19 years.
Yes.
The fence was there when you purchased the house?
Yes.
Was there some kind of survey done or anything when you purchased the house that brought this issue up about where the property line was?
No, we just always assumed it was a Co-op's fence because the good side was facing us.
Just as another, and I'm sorry to do this, but just as another point of order, assuming that you could put the fence back up in its current position, where it is right now, she could put a six-foot fence all the way up to where her property line started without a variance, right?
See, I don't understand.
The portion in the back?
She could put a, she could put a six-foot fence on half of the replacement property, roughly. So from the back left corner of her house, backwards?
My issue is, is if part of this land where the current fence is, is actually Co-op property?
Yeah.
Which could have a 10-foot fence if she wanted, if they wanted it.
If the Co-op was the applicant.
If the Co-op, okay. But presumably, there's nothing barring, except the Co-op's agreement to do so, there would be nothing barring that piece of fence. Do you know where that property line switches?
Yeah, it's right about, ironically, where we can no longer have the six-foot fence. So where we could have it is where the fence is on the Co-op's property.
Okay, so from that, and you do understand that in your backyard and all the way up the side yard, or the side of the backyard, up to the corner of your house, you can have a six-foot fence?
Correct, yep.
From the corner of your house forward, without a variance, you could only put up a four-foot fence?
Correct, yep.
And as I understand your application, the section, would there be, what would the problem be with putting up a four-foot fence from the back corner of your house further forward?
Uh, I would be, I would be looking directly at the cars of the Co-op parking lot.
So based on that, what I understand is, is that section, that, what is the width of your house or depth of your house, that section where it looks like there's a couple of side windows, I assume one of them being the kitchen?
Yes.
That section right there is where you get lights in even with the six-foot fence?
Yes, correct.
How far do you have to take this on your property to get off the Co-op property?
Uh, I don't have the exact measurement. We have to take it about a foot in, but then there is a tree, so we need to bring it in a little bit further so we don't have to take down. We're trying very hard not to take down any of the existing trees because that is obviously a natural border that we'd like to maintain as well.
So is this fence going to end up being fairly close to your garage, the side of your garage?
But enough, far enough that we can still put a gate in?
That you can get through to your back?
Right, exactly, yeah.
And it's going to stop, I'm looking again at your picture, which are very helpful. It's going to stop where in relation, because I see you've got a forsythia bush and a tree, large tree?
It would stop just where the forsythia is, so same footprint, just over a little bit.
One of the things that we're required to do is see if we can lessen the amount of a variance that we need to grant you. I know that you want a six-foot fence all the way up to where the forsythia bush is, but if we were to minimize the variance to the depth of your house, or the width of whatever it is, facing the parking lot, to block the lights and whatnot at the parking lot, but then at the front corner of your house, go with a four-foot fence, is that an option for you?
I would prefer it not be.
Why?
There is a lot of commotion and a lot of traffic. The Co-op employees tend to park in that corner of the lot. For whatever reason, they like to sit in their car during their breaks and such in that corner of the lot, and my husband and I would just, would just like the privacy.
I'm just going to add to the same thing Mr. Frary was asking you. I'm looking at the picture online, and it looks like the fence right now, behind the fence, it looks like there's a property, it's not a parking lot. How wide is this?
That is the Co-op's. I would say it's probably about six foot wide. That is where they tend to keep all of their, that's where garbage collects a lot and where they tend to keep clippings from mowing and such.
Okay.
So it's, it's, it's an underutilized spot.
So from the road to that, where they park the cars, is it about 12 feet?
No, no, no.
So?
Six feet, maybe.
Six feet?
Yep.
Because there's two trees in there on that piece of property, right?
Correct.
And you have a fence, your fence is coming out, it looks like almost identical through like the tree, the first tree?
Yes.
It doesn't go all the way out to your, to the road?
No.
And?
No, my forsythia bush runs directly, is at the same spot as that large tree.
And how many feet are we talking about from the front to the back of your house? Do you know?
Oh, I'm sorry, I don't know.
No, do you know how many section of fences you need to put in?
Uh, this is where I'm ill-prepared, I apologize.
That's okay. It looks like about?
The plot plan says 129, if that's what it means. I think I had?
I think that's the whole sideline of the?
Yeah, so from?
It looks like you have six by, what is it, six by six? You probably have, probably have 48 if, if, if you got eight, eight by six.
You know what? I wonder if I can tell you from looking at, so each of those sections of the fence is six foot. And there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven sections of fence, it looks like, that go up into my?
About 42 feet, yeah.
That go up to my garage?
Yeah, that's why I gave you eight. I figured that's about 48. So when you put that fence up, are you taking the other fence down?
We are?
Or is the Co-op taking the other fence?
We are taking the fence down on our property, and I plan to contact the Co-op to see if they would like the fence removed from theirs. But since it's their property, on their property, I'm not going to do that without?
So that fence possibly might remain there? There's no discussion yet on? Okay, thank you.
If I may, I'm looking at your pictures here, and the one with, it's got the forsythia bush?
Okay.
In the front. The tree that's to the left of that, is that on your property?
That's Co-op's.
That's Co-op's property?
Correct.
You also have a picture here that shows large mounds of snow above the fence. Where, where is the Co-op piling snow?
That was where the Co-op piled the snow this winter.
But I mean, where in relation to the property?
Well, right against the fence. As a matter of fact, one of the snowbanks broke a piece of the fence.
Bad question on my part. Is it more towards the back of the property, or is it all?
Along the entire length?
Parking lot?
The parking lot.
So that length of the parking lot that borders the fence, or there's that area of the fence, they just pushed the snow over to the, to the fence?
They, I think their intention was to put it in that six-to-eight-foot green space that's between the end of the parking lot and the fence.
And that's the area that's their property?
Correct.
Okay.
Ms. Lansing?
Yes.
I have a question.
Sure.
So to enjoy the, your entire front yard, it sounds like it would be very difficult to do that with the four-foot fence, the way you've described at least the commotion, the lights, the congregating. Can you just describe what that would be like if you were on your front lawn or?
It would absolutely change the dynamic of my home. My home is small, as you can see, both my plot and my home is small. I keep it tidy and private, and if it was a four-foot fence, it would open me up to feel like I was part of the Co-op's lot. My neighborhood is very proud. Via Del Mar and Old Niskiuna, that's a gateway to that neighborhood. And, you know, we have fought very hard against any additional commercialization of that area because we're really proud of the neighborhood that we have. And I just feel like if there wasn't that delineation, that it would change the whole feeling of entrance to the neighborhood.
Any other questions from the board? You have anything else you wish to add?
Not just that, I appreciate your consideration. You know, as, as I said, my husband and I have lived there for 19 years, and we just simply want to replace what was in existence when we bought the house and actually put up a nicer version of it. The fence that I'm looking for will absolutely go well with the character of my home and the character of the neighborhood, and we'll make sure that it's properly cared for.
Just, Mr. Chairman, quick question. The neighbor who wrote a letter, where is she compared to?
Directly across the street from me, so that fence falling down, she's the one that's most affected.
So she's across the street?
That's what she looks at when she looks out her front windows.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone in the room who would like to be heard for or against this application? Do any members of the board wish to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, may I make a motion?
You may.
I would move that the request for the variance be granted. We have an opportunity here that it's a benefit that perhaps couldn't be achieved by any other reasonable or feasible means. It certainly, it will not make it an underserved change in the neighborhood, but in fact, to the contrary, will make a desirable change to the neighborhood. There will be no detrimental to the nearby properties, and the request perhaps is substantial, given the zoning rules concerning fences and front yards and such. However, given the unique character of this particular house and its location of putting a commercial parking lot, I don't think that it would be detrimental or substantial. The, actually, you know, this is a case where we have good, good people of Niskiuna stepping forward to rectify a situation, and the request certainly, you know, it doesn't even appear to be self-created, given the fact that it's also been there for at least 19 years?
At least 19.
And perhaps longer. It's, I would move that for those reasons, that this application be granted.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to second the motion for all the reasons Mr. Green stated. I also like to, to put on record that we thank you for taking this and changing the fence, because we know that this fence could be a 10-foot fence. I prefer if it's six feet over 10 feet. So for all the reasons stated, I second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there discussion on the motion? Before I call for a vote, since I don't see other discussion, I have a question for your councilor staff.
Yep.
The six-foot fence that was there, put there and to be owned by Co-op, would that have been a requirement when they got planning board approval for that parking lot?
So we've looked at that issue a lot.
And if, and if it was, are they required to maintain it?
So the town records don't reflect who installed the fence, and when work was done at the Co-op, when renovation to the facade of the Co-op was done, there was site plan approval then, and the only requirement that related to that, I believe, was that some landscaping was done at the same time. So they're not in violation of anything, the Co-op's not in violation of anything, any site plan that's on file.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I would ask if we could call the roll.
Mr. Frary?
I'm, I'm approaching this from a little different standpoint. I am not a proponent of six-foot fences in granting variances in, in most situations. There are some unique factors in this case, the first of which is that along this property line, and wherever it may be, the Co-op could put a 10-foot fence up along this line without the need for any variance whatsoever, without ever coming before this board. So in terms of, of, on their property, they could put a 10-foot fence, which quite frankly, I wasn't aware of, which would certainly dwarf what it is that you're asking for here. So that's one issue. The second issue is, and, and I'm not saying that this is cast in stone, but because that fence, obviously, is falling down, but because the fence that was there was there for 19 years, theoretically, if it was on your property, as you're now proposing, you could most likely replace it section by section without the need for a variance. You could just replace what was already there. That's also a rather unique situation. Third is, I, I look at, and it's a little hard to tell from your photos, but again, thank you for providing them, because, you know, while I'm through this area on a daily basis, I don't know that I necessarily took the time to look at all these issues. Where the parking lot ends in relation to where your right to have a six-foot fence would end, which is without a variance, which would be the rear corner of your house, is still an area that, according to your photographs and your information you provided us here today, the Co-op would still be piling snow, which, based on some of your photographs, extends well above a six-foot fence. So if I were to say, well, you need a four-foot fence, certainly, a lot of that snow would be very visible to you and totally out of your control in terms of where it's placed and how, how high it's placed. I think the fact that you're bordering a commercial property, as Mr. Green said, provides another unique situation, because while the Co-op is not a 24-hour establishment, there is, as we can tell from your photographs, some, some recreational activities that are, take place in that parking lot, or at least in that area, that, again, providing some kind of security and some type of privacy, I understand is important to you. I'm going to vote yes on the motion for the reasons that I've just stated, which I consider to be unusual and unique to this location. I agree that it's not going to change the I agree that it's not going to change the character of the neighborhood. And you could have a 10-foot fence there, which is out of your control, which probably would. I think it's going to provide you some security and some privacy that I don't think could be achieved by any other measure, particularly putting a four-foot fence up without the need of a variance. It is substantial, but I don't know of any of the variance requests for fences that come here that aren't. Most of them are two-foot height variances. For those reasons, the reasons that have been stated, I'll vote yes.
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Ms. Osterlich?
Yes, for the reasons stated, and I'd also like to add that I really appreciate your efforts in approving this eyesore. It is rare for a two-foot variance to be granted this far into a front yard property. But the unique circumstances of your lot abutting the commercial property really do require it for you to get any sense of privacy or safety, sense of safety to reduce the noise and the light. The length of the two-foot variance of a full six-foot fence going all the way to the front, almost all the way to the front of your yard is, I believe, required. So yes.
Mr. Daley?
I'm going to vote yes for all the previous statements.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Hoak?
Yes.
Chairman Goodman?
I will vote yes for the reasons that have been stated. And I will emphasize that but for the inches of the property line, the town code actually contemplates that a 10-foot fence could be put along this property line. And therefore, it is lower than what could otherwise be there if the fence was moved one foot away. And it's really the refusal of a commercial or semi-commercial property to maintain what it appears they put up for the protection of the residential neighbors. And this is really a very unique situation. Although we don't normally, let me rephrase it, we rarely approve six-foot fences. I would vote yes for this one. So I want to thank you for your time this evening. The variance is granted.
Thank you all. That means a lot. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Have a nice day.
If we could call the next case, please?
The appeal of Stephen Gleason, 608 Michelle Way, Niskiuna, New York, for a variance from Section 220-25B1A of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskiuna to construct a six-foot fence on the property noted above.
What?
The property is located in the R2 Medium Density Residential Zoning District. Then Section 220-25B1A permits the maximum height for fences located in the front and side yards to be four feet. As proposed, a six-foot high fence is located in the side yard. Therefore, a two-foot fence height variance is required. Eleven notices were sent out, one response. I received a response. I am writing this letter regarding the two-foot variance for Stephen Gleason at 608 Michelle Way, Niskiuna, New York. I believe Stephen Gleason should be approved, the two-foot variance at 608 Michelle Way. I have been Steve's neighbor for the last seven years and there currently have been a six-foot fence separating our backyards. The main reason I am for Steve, keeping the six-foot fence between the yards is for the kids' safety. There are three small kids that live next door and obsessed with my pool. I have, I would like to do anything possible to keep them and have, from having easy access to the pool and keeping them safe. I also believe putting a four-foot fence would change the look of my backyard and the neighborhood. From James Dent.
If the applicant, please come forward to state your name and address. I do have one question for counsel.
Yeah.
The, what is the code for fencing around a pool that the adjacent owner would be responsible for in terms of height?
So I think it's just all the responsibilities on the adjacent owner. And it's not quite six-foot, is it Jeff?
It's two feet in depth of fence would be required around a pool.
No, no. How high is the fence around a pool, fence height around a pool, minimum?
Oh, four feet.
Okay, so only a four-foot height requirement for pools?
Correct. I can check the code on that though.
Okay. I thought there might be a state code that was, that impacted that.
I thought it was five feet last time.
That's what I thought. But that's why I asked. What? Four, okay. So sir, if you could just state your name and address and summarize your application?
Sure. So it's, I'm Stephen Gleason at 608 Michelle Way. And I am applying for a two-foot variance for a fence that's on the side of my house. So I bought the house in 2012 and this fence was already up. I have a six-foot fence on the side that connects to my neighbor's fence, the gentleman who wrote that letter. And basically, my fence around my house is an eyesore. It's old. It's probably, on the side of the house, it's probably a 30-year-old fence. So for aesthetic reasons, I want to replace it. But the main reason for the six-foot fence on the side of the house is for safety reasons. You know, I would have no problem putting up a four-foot fence. But with my neighbor's pool, my neighbor has a built-in pool. I have three small children at home that are obsessed with the pool. And I think a four-foot fence, it's not high enough. The little guy, the five-year-old can open the gate with no problem and get around. And it's primarily for safety reasons that I want this six-foot fence on the side of the house.
Would this fencing be considered his backyard where it's going to be in your side yard just based on where the houses are situated? Or is it?
So it would connect to his fence. His fence comes off the back of his house. And my fence connects now to that fence. So it's basically in the middle of my house, the middle of my yard.
So it comes, it comes to the fact that your house goes a little deeper than his house goes?
Yes.
And it's only for a small sec, how many feet from the back corner of the house is it? I can see the picture, but.
I would say it's about 10 or 12 feet, see from the picture. And as you can see, it's an old fence and it's really an eyesore.
And how high is that fence now?
It's a six-foot fence that's there now.
It was, do we have records to show that a variance was granted for a six-foot fence there before?
It was not. So it would require a second variance.
So there was no prior variance for what is there?
Correct.
Okay, so I'm looking at your submission here. As I face your house, the front of your house, you have a four-foot, looks like picket, some type of fence from.
That's on the opposite side.
Right. What I'm trying to find out is, let's put the variance aside. Are you looking to replace, you said it's all in bad shape. Are you looking to replace the entire fence?
Yes.
That would include the four-foot picket on the left side from the rear corner of your house to the property line and back.
That's correct.
And there's a wire fence four feet all the way across the back.
Right.
So that piece of fence can be replaced without a variance with a six-foot fence. You're aware of that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and that's part of what you're going to replace?
Yes.
Okay. Coming up now on your neighbor's side.
Right.
Your fence, it says, is a six-foot stockade, right?
Mm-hmm.
And it comes all the way up to where your, this one section that goes from the property line across to your house is? Which is the piece of the issue?
Yes.
Okay.
And connects to my neighbor's.
Okay, now are you replacing, I know you said the gate's in bad shape, but are you replacing that section so it's all consistent?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So you're going to have to take down the section that's at issue?
That's correct.
Okay. Now let's deal with that issue. What is along that same side? I'm looking again at this picture that you provided. Let me find the one. This one. This picture, okay?
Yes.
Okay, and this is the section that I'm looking at that needs, that is the section at issue?
Yes.
Now, I see your neighbor's fence with the lattice at the top.
Yes.
That's a six-foot fence.
Yes, it is.
From that corner where the two fences meet, going back on your neighbor's side, what is the height of the fence? Six feet?
Yes.
Okay. So I understand the concern about the pool. You don't have a pool, right?
No.
The neighbor has a pool.
Yes.
And your little guy is not going to scale the neighbor's six-foot fence, right?
No, but he has a gate on that side. And the gates, oftentimes it's open and then the kids are obsessed with it, so.
Okay. My question really is, if you're taking all this fence down and putting new up.
Yes.
Why can you not just move your gated section that's now broken back to the back corner of your house?
I have a chimney. I have a chimney there. And I also have a sunroom on the back of the house, which would be awkward when you come out the door of the sunroom to have a fence right there. And besides the fact, it would look, it would really look funny if it's not connected to my neighbor's fence.
It would look funny, I'm sorry, what?
It would just look, it wouldn't look right.
Why?
But I have more concern, I would have more concern with the sunroom, the sunroom and the chimney that's right there.
And again, it's a little hard for me to tell, the chimney, I see the chimney, it doesn't go all the way to the back corner of the house, right?
No, but it's right there. And then there's a sunroom off the back.
No, let's just deal with the chimney, which you said is a problem.
Yep.
If you put this section at the back corner of the house, it's not going to be an issue with the chimney, right?
No, it's not going to hit the chimney.
Okay, so then the issue really is you have an outside door from the sunroom.
Right.
Out to the, I believe that's what I'm looking at here, right?
Yes.
And you, is this like a three-season porch?
Yes.
Is it an addition off of the back of the house?
Yes.
Okay, and how, from where the door is to the back corner, how far is that? Just roughly.
It's like right on it, like right.
No, but what I'm saying is, is from where the door to the sunroom is, where the addition started to the back corner of your house. Is it six feet? Is it eight feet? Is it to the, how wide is that sunroom?
The sunroom, I think it's about probably eight by 12.
Okay. So would there be some reason, I see the chimney stops, would there be some reason that you, you want to be able to use the sunroom door to get to the backyard, right?
Yes.
Okay. Could you put the fence at this corner of the house, lessening the distance that you would require a variance, just move what you've got now back to the other side of the chimney to this corner of the house? Could you do that, still allowing you to get to the backyard out of the sunroom?
It would be awkward. See how the door is right there? It would just be awkward when you open the door.
Why would it be awkward?
Well, look at the picture.
I am.
You'd be right on top of the fence.
Well, you open the door, the door opens, it doesn't open beyond the edge of the house.
No.
It still provides you access to the backyard.
But you can see the space there. It just wouldn't look right.
Is there any other functional reason that you couldn't move that back there? It's not impeding something in terms of.
That would be the main reason, impeding the entranceway to that sunroom.
This picture that you provide right here, it appears that this entire area is being used for storage of things and whatnot. I see barrels, I see tarp, I see.
There's wood on the side of the house, there's firewood on the side of the house.
Right.
And the barrels are in front of the gate because the gate's broken and I have.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is, it's not like you have a patio here. It's not like you have, it looks like you're using it for storage, storage of wood.
There is a patio behind the fence. So when you come out of the sunroom, there's a patio. You can't see it, but there is a patio there.
That extends into the backyard, okay. So that would be one reason you couldn't bring the fence to the extreme back corner of the house because it'd be on top of the patio.
Yes.
But other than just being awkward, you could bring it to this corner of the house here and over to your neighbor's fence.
Mm-hmm.
You could, right?
I could.
Okay.
But I'd rather not.
So if this project's done, I walk into your yard and there's one uniform type of fence from that left rear corner out to the property line, all the way around to the back and back up? That's your goal?
Yes.
Okay, what kind of fence?
So it's a vinyl fence. It's a white vinyl fence. I'm going to have it installed by Afco at a lathe.
Okay.
So it'll be a nice, a lot nicer than I have now, I can tell you that. I know my fence is an eyesore.
Okay.
The stockade on the side is probably 30 years old.
Well, you have essentially three different kinds of fence. You have stockade, wire, and picket.
Yes.
Okay.
So, but the main concern is the safety of the children with the four-foot fence and the gate.
I'm trying to, and again, I don't see it on here. Where is the gate to your neighbor's?
It's, it would be on this side. You can't see it in the picture, but it's right on.
To the right of the photograph?
It's on the same side, yes.
But if you had a six-foot fence moved back to that rear corner right outside, you still would have that security?
I still would. I still would, but there'd be an expense with the patio.
Well, no, I'm talking about moving it up to where that sunroom starts.
Yes. Just the way it sits now, it goes flush to my neighbor's, to the back of my neighbor's fence.
Okay.
That would be another reason. If I pushed it back, it would.
Have more room for firewood.
And the firewood's fine on the side.
Mr.?
Just a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Between the chimney and the house.
Yes.
What's the width of that? I mean, I'm not sure if it's four feet, six feet.
The width of the chimney?
Yeah, from the chimney to the end of the house and then.
So the width of the chimney is about five feet?
Five feet.
More, yeah. And then there's probably another three feet, maybe two and a half feet to the corner?
So it looks like you're putting the fence on the outside of the chimney.
On the other side of the chimney.
Right, on the other side, brush straight to the chimney. So how about if you move it on the inside and brush it to?
Well, it's the chimney.
So how much room you have there?
It doesn't butt up against the chimney. There's a little bit of a space.
Oh, there's a space there?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So you have, between the chimney and the end of the house, about three feet?
Yes.
And on the other side, you have about a foot away from the fence, from the chimney? Or how far?
I would say it's about two feet.
Two feet?
Away from the chimney.
Okay. And coming back, you mentioned you have a deck back there. Does the deck or the patio, the patio, does it go to the chimney?
Yes, it does.
So it's right next to the chimney?
Yeah.
And when you talk to Afco, actually, I know this company, they're a very good company.
Yes.
When you talk to them, usually they're pretty good about making recommendation of what you should do. Did they mention any of that stuff to you? Like, because they know all the codes, they know the best way to put fences.
Yes.
So have they advised you differently what you're supposed to do?
They said they could easily do the four-foot fence coming off my neighbor's fence. But that's not what I want to do, you know, for safety reasons.
Okay, you're talking about safety. Let me ask you this question.
Yep.
If you were to put the fence six foot in the back, to the back of your house, and go in in an angle to the fence of your neighbor, would that work for you?
What do you mean in angle? Explain that.
Okay, so you have the fence, you put it here, and you put an angle to go to the fence of your neighbor. So like, we're talking about 45 degrees? Would that work for you?
That would look horrible.
But it wouldn't work. But would that cover the safety, besides the aesthetic?
You mean, if it was six foot?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be fine, but I wouldn't do, I would never do that. I mean, that would be a fence like this off the back of my house.
How is your property, it looks like the back of your house sticking out a little more than your neighbor. Is that true? That's why you're dealing with this issue? Is your neighbor a little bit?
So my neighbor has, my neighbor's house is constructed completely different. It's a raised ranch. Mine's a split ranch, so.
Right, so the back of your neighbor's house looks like it goes to?
It goes right to the, his fence goes to the back of his house, the back of his house.
Okay. So that's why we, probably, that's why they didn't. So that's why we, probably, that's why they didn't have to have a variance for that fence.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Sorry, Ms. Osterlich.
Mr. Leezen?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Frary has suggested moving this piece of fence back to the post, um, to the rear of the chimney. And I'm just wondering, what do you use, and, and you've talked about the space between where the fence is now that you've got the gate on and the proposed space? It's about five feet, what do you do with that space now? Is there a reason, do you use it? Is there something that you do that's special there?
Uh, there's a patio there.
There's a patio?
Behind the fence.
Immediately behind the fence?
Yeah.
A cement patio?
Yeah.
Oh, are you able to, um?
So you come, you, those, you open those gates, if you look at that picture, you open the gates, there's a, there's a, it's a paved patio.
So if I'm looking from the front or from the street view?
Maybe we can, um, you have an aerial photograph on the last page, can you just come forward and draw on one of the maps to show where your concrete patio is? And that way everyone will know exactly where it is.
Right.
I'm most curious if I'm looking at your property from the front, from the, from the street. And we moved, and we suggested moving that fence to the, about five feet backwards?
Okay, so if you look at this, patio is right behind the fence.
Am I going to see the patio? If, if that fencing is moved towards the back of the house, at least further back, are we going to be seeing a cement patio? Dangling into the front of the property?
I would have to rip it up.
Okay.
Let me see.
Is there a request that you simply mark the aerial view so that we can identify?
If you can just, if you can just draw on the last page and then we'll be able to enter it into the record.
If, the second you open up those doors, is this patio?
Yeah.
Oh, you know, just move the microphone over, turn on the microphone so we can get it.
So just beyond the gate is a patio that, that connects to the, to the chimney and it comes right off the sunroom, so when you come out of the sunroom, there's a patio.
That's an area you use as a backyard area.
That's where I have my grill, that's where, yeah.
And can you just on the last page, which is the aerial, just, I know it's hard to write because it's dark, but just sort of on there, circle how big the patio is.
So, let me see here. Yeah. Okay, so.
Immediately upon entering that gate, the patio begins?
Yes. So it goes to the back, it's like this.
And it's, it's a concrete patio?
Yes.
And that patio has been there before you bought the house?
When I bought the house, yeah, it's actually paved, it's like a blacktop patio that was paved. Thank you.
Okay. Other questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just have a, another opportunity to look at, to mark.
Yes.
Aerial photograph, and I guess that would be made part of the record.
Without objection, that will be made part of the record.
Now that it's marked, it is.
Thank you.
Just make sure the clerk has that for the record. Okay, any other questions? Sir, is there anything else you wish to add?
Don't think so.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard for or against the application? Hearing none, is there anyone on the board who wishes to make a motion?
I'll go ahead and move to grant the variance. Essentially, this is not, this was not caused by you, um, where the fence is located now at least, and where the patio begins, uh, in your backyard, in this particular where you're asking for the variance.
Yes.
And, um, it appears that the benefit you seek to achieve, the safety of your children, to make sure that it's all coherent, that the fencing is coherent, um, you cannot achieve that by moving the fence further backward on your property in that spot because of the patio, um, and making sure that the gate itself isn't accessible by the kids. I don't believe this would be an undesirable change in the neighborhood since it already exists and you're actually curing an eyesore, I appreciate that.
Oh, horrible.
The, um, the request itself may be substantial, but, um, in weighing, in, in weighing the, um, the benefit to the applicant, um, to the detriment, I, I believe it's, it's outweighed. I don't believe there would be any physical or environmental effects since it's, it's a fence that's existing right now. And again, even if it were self-created somehow, it, it's not determinative, so for all these reasons, I move to grant the variance.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made in second, is there discussion on the motion? I would ask if we could please call the roll.
Mr. Frary?
I'm going to vote no on the motion for these reasons. I currently, and I understand the concern for, for a four-foot fence, but as I look at these photographs, I see six-foot fence that the neighbor has, and I recognize there's a gate, but a six-foot fence around their pool, which I think provides adequate security. The concern for security, what confuses me is that currently, as I look at these photographs, on the other side of the house, on the backyard, there is and has been a four-foot fence. And the same concern would exist in terms of security if one of your children were to scale or get out the six, the four-foot fence and simply walk around the house to the neighbor's yard. But yet this fence has existed in its current form for, I assume, since you purchased the house.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna take that gate out on the other side.
I'm sorry, um, you can't comment now.
Okay.
So I, I, while I acknowledge and understand the concern for security, I don't think, given the factual information before this board, that is sustainable. You have a six-foot fence around the neighbor's pool, about you have a gate, but that gate clearly has to be secured, otherwise the neighbor would be out of compliance with the code. You could put a four-foot fence if it's important to maintain that area of the patio, which evidently exists, then you can put a four-foot fence of the same making, of the same nature in the area where your current fence is and achieve the same purpose. It is not like the neighbor's pool is unsecured or has a four-foot fence. And given the fact that there is currently a four-foot fence at least around two sides of your property, according to the information provided this board, I, I, which, while you're going to replace it, it's existed in that form since you've owned the house. I think there are less restrictive alternatives, which I haven't necessarily, at least in terms for my purposes, heard a viable reason you couldn't go with a less restrictive alternative, one of which would not require a variance. So for those reasons, I'm voting no on the motion.
Mr. Latte?
When it comes to the safety of mentioning the kids, usually, uh, in this situation, I seem to, uh, my mind is getting boggled here. Uh, I do agree with Mr. Frary on some of the stuff he mentioned, uh, the fence has been there, uh, you dealt with it before. But again, when I talked to you and I asked you some questions and looked at the property, it's not even with yours, it, it does, it will look a little weird if you have your fence back, you have your patio there and so on. So I'm gonna vote yes on this one.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Osterlich?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yeah.
Mr. Green?
Uh, this, this one's kind of a tough one for me, uh, but it's looking to me like from the testimony provided in the photographs that one of the alternatives would place it in a place that would work against, uh, the, a reasonable functioning of, of the parcel. Uh, stepping out of a, a door, uh, in, in the area of the sunroom could, uh, change the, the character of the home, well, well, probably wouldn't change the character of the neighborhood. I, while there may be other ways to achieve, uh, the, the benefit, I don't think that they're so much better so as to, uh, in me weighing the motion, I want to vote no, so on this close one, uh, I am going to vote in favor of the motion to grant the variance.
Thank you.
It's, it's a close one.
Mr. Hope?
I'll vote no for the reasons stated by Mr. Frary.
Chairman Goodman?
I'm gonna agree with Mr. Green on this, that this is a close one. There is the possibility of that four-foot fence in the front section, but I note the fact that we have multiple different fencing there, that the applicant could choose to keep what he has, and overall, this is an improvement over what we have, so I will vote yes for the motion and the variance carries.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you.
We could call the next case, please.
The appeal of Donald Andrus, 868 Whitney Drive, Niskuna, New York, where variance from Section 220-18B 3B and Section 220-13 Schedule IB of the Zoning Ordinance of the Town of Niskuna to construct a 16-foot by 36-foot in-ground pool on the property noted above. The property is located in the R1 Low Density Residential Zoning District. Section 220-18B 3B states that the required rear yard dimensions for major accessory structures shall be the same as applies to the principal building. As defined, major accessory structures are detached accessory buildings or other structures in excess of 120 square feet. The pool at 576 square feet is a major accessory structure. Section 220-13 Schedule IB establishes the minimum required rear setback as 25 feet. As proposed, the pool will be located 22 feet from the rear property line, therefore, a three-foot rear yard setback variance is required. 10 notices were sent out, zero responses.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, before we start, I'd like the record to reflect that the applicant submitted the appropriate disclosure under Section 809 of the General Municipal Law. Uh, Mr. Andrus has been a long-term, longtime employee of the Town Highway Department. He did exactly the right thing by submitting to the Planning Office the disclosure indicating that he has not used his position to influence any of the process up until this point, so the town board, or the planning board, zoning board can go forward with this application in accordance with the appropriate disclosure.
Thank you, counsel. Sir, if you could please state your name and address for the record and summarize your application, the reason for it?
Uh, my name's Donald Andrus, I live at 868 Whitney Drive, Niskuna, 12309. Uh, the reason for the application is I have, uh, an existing pool. Uh, I purchased the house 10 years ago, the pool, I believe, was installed in 1973. And, uh, we've made several repairs to it, and Concord's been to the house, it's, uh, just not repairable. So, um, we actually didn't open it last year, we've been kinda, it took a year to kinda decide what options we wanted to go with. Um, I've changed the, we've changed the shape and the size of the pool three different times. I actually have, um, when I gave the measurements to Linda over, I think it was February, there was still quite a bit of snow and ice back there, so I couldn't get a good property line. If I could give you the, the new pictures and measurements, is that okay?
Sure, if we could keep those for the record?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
And does it change the?
Uh, it's less, um, I'm actually, I'm actually exactly 25 feet instead of, uh, the 22, I believe, and then on the one little eight-foot section, it would be 23 instead of, what did you say your original number was? I can't remember, I have to, let me look at mine.
I believe it's 22.
Yeah, so, so Concord has, um, yeah, they're kinda sick of me, we keep changing, I'm trying to do everything we can to not need a variance. I've changed the, so on the back line, I have a six-foot stockade fence. And my property line is actually a, a foot behind that, so now that the snow and ice has been gone, I've been able to get in there with my neighbor and, um, we, you know, we have the metal stakes on our corner property. So we've moved the pool closer to my house, so the, um, majority of the length will, will be exactly 25 feet from the back line, and then there's a little eight-foot bench that is going to be 23 feet, so I'm actually just requesting a two-foot variance at eight feet long, not the entire length of the pool. Um, originally, there was stairs coming off the side, that was going to be a four-foot, so then we've redesigned it, put the stairs off of the end where I have, uh, close to 40 feet on that side, so, you know, that kinda keeps us in. I made sure the other side is, uh, you know, over the 20 feet. And, um, I have a, there's a three-season porch that was, uh, it's on the house, I, you know, I was there when I purchased it. Um, I'm as close as I can go with the edge of the pool there with the, uh, it's five feet. I don't really want to allow them to dig any closer to that footing, um, I know that would be at my risk, but it, it, I could move it to two feet, but by boy, that's kind of a risk, I don't know what'll happen down the road with that concrete pad, so, we've changed the, uh, the width of the pool a couple of times, so this was kinda the best option for the expense. Um, if you look at the pictures of the pool, the, the existing pool was a little octagon, and then they had a big concrete old patio. So I'm really not changing the footprint, I'm basically removing that large patio and replacing that with just the, the shallow end of a new pool. So the area of the pool is going to be the same, it's just going to be more pool, less patio. And my neighbor to the rear of me, there's a tree line and my fence, and then he's got quite a large yard before his house. And his, uh, his children are actually pretty excited about the pool if this goes through, so, we've talked about, um, yeah. So, so basically, I think what I'm asking here for today is, uh, two feet, uh, two-foot variance on the rear, and, uh, it's only eight foot long. Is that?
What is that in there under the drawing? Uh, a, a submerged bench type thing?
Yes, yes, I, uh, I've been a, uh, manual labor for years and I, I'm nearly not a fan of hot tubs. And I've had, uh, I think this is kinda like the little nice spot for me, let the kids enjoy the pool and I kinda wanna sit on the bench. Uh, we have a couple of older people in the family, so it's kinda, uh, nice spot, I think.
My que, because we are required to look at minimizing the necessity of a variance. And I know you wouldn't want to put it, just flip it over to the other side because of that porch, but could you put that bench area, basically making an X, if that is the northeast corner of the pool, making believe that north is the top of the sheet?
Okay.
Could you put it at the southwest corner of the pool and then not need a variance at all?
So to the bottom left, you're saying over where it's 20 point, 20 and a half feet from the side?
Yes.
Okay, so.
And so it would be between the house and the
Yeah.
pool, but it would still be, how wide is that, that's a two-foot wide bench?
Yeah.
So it would bring that to 15 feet from the house?
Yeah, actually, that was one of, uh, that was like my, my third suggestion to Concord, and that end, that's left side of the pool is going to be the eight-foot, the deep end, so a bench.
Okay.
I don't, I don't want it. I don't, I don't wanna tread water.
Okay.
So we, we were gonna put the shallow end at that end, and then that kinda puts that at the opposite end of the yard, the shallow end. You know, we have a patio off of the sun porch, so it kinda is right where the shallow end will be, and we're actually, where those stairs are coming out, kinda moving the patio to make sure we're staying within the, the, the side boundaries. And I had, we were gonna have a wider pool, and I, I asked them to reduce that to make sure we were as close to 25 feet as possible. I've been working on this since December to try four or five different shapes to not need a variance. You know, we had the kidney shape in there, then we had stairs off to the other side, and at the end of the day, this is, I'm requesting two feet for an eight-foot stretch.
Questions from the board? Well, we need to revise the petition first.
Well, we can amend the request, so just so we're clear. Are you willing, so at this point, you're asking for two-foot rear yard setback variance?
Yes, but, and only eight feet long.
Yeah.
Not the entire length. We were unable to get the, I, with the amount of snow and ice that was back there when we did this original, when I did the request, I didn't wanna be short. I didn't wanna, I knew, I was pretty sure we had 25 feet, but there was so much snow and ice on the fence, I didn't wanna say I had 25, and then, you know, it was 24. I would rather be before you now than, you know, not afterwards, and it's, the numbers aren't working out.
If I may, I mean, I hear you. I just, ready, the current diagram in the red manila folder showing 25 feet or 23 feet? That's accurate, that's what I need to know.
The new, the new one is dead accurate, yes.
Thank you, that's what I needed to know.
That's a hard tape, that's edge of pool to the property line. I removed the sections of fence with my neighbor to the rear of me, and we ran a string from our two property stakes at each corner, ran the string straight across, and I ran the tape from that string to where 25 feet would be, and it's actually exactly where the edge of the existing pool is. So they were, they stayed within, I don't know what the codes were back in 1973, but they were 25 feet also.
Yeah, so the way that you're, you're requesting it now, there's actually more room in between the pool and the, and the fence?
Yeah, there's actually, we're gaining a couple more yards of, a couple more feet of green space. I, I thought I'd be a little closer, and I didn't wanna take a chance of being wrong, so.
So, so you're just, you're amending your application to reflect the more accurate?
I'm asking for less.
Right.
Yeah.
Thanks.
And all this, what you show in the photos, this is all coming out?
Yeah, they're going to remove that, and that'll, the concrete patio, and that's basically, the patio will be just the shallow end of the new pool, so my footprint is basically the same, it's just gonna be pool instead of, you know.
Right.
And it's a shame, we've tried to maintain it for the last 10 years when we bought the house from the Ryder-Jacksons, it's just, the tub has rotted on the one side, so if you can see all the water under that liner, that liner is supposed to be six feet deep, but it's all mud and water. So caved in last year, and we just kinda been pondering whether to, it's almost $12,000, be almost $13,000 to have it removed and backfilled, and that's, that's a lot of money to lose, kind of a, something we enjoy. Kids, we've had fun with it, and we'd like to continue it on for a few more years.
Mr. Chairman, just if I could make, if it already has not been made, or if it's not implicit, I would just ask that the record include the materials that were provided tonight?
Yes.
A red manila folder?
Yep.
With the accurate diagram?
Correct. We'll hand a copy, one of these copies to the clerk.
Yep.
Matter of fact, I've reviewed it, so if you hand that to the clerk, and that will be part of the record.
The clerk has so been handed.
Any other questions from the board?
I just wanna make sure that we clarify what we're voting on. The two?
We're not, we have to, we don't have a motion.
I, I know, but are we amending this?
Well, you can't make a motion until you know what you're voting on.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
What the applicant has amended their petition to request is a two-foot rear yard setback variance.
Okay. Two-foot setback variance.
I'm sorry. Two, the, the new application, as requested by the applicant, is for a two-yard, sorry, two-foot rear yard setback variance.
Okay.
Okay. And the, what was the original, was I asking for four?
Three.
Three, yeah. So we're, we're getting less. Yeah, we're getting there.
Less is better than more.
Yeah, the salesman at Concord's had, had enough of me. I've changed things like six times on him to try to get it to fit. You guys are great, and you're always, you know, I try not to ask, but it's where we are.
Okay. Other questions from, not yet, other questions from the board? Anyone in the audience wish to be heard for or against the application? Hearing none, I would ask if anyone wishes to make a motion.
Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion, we accept the applicant. She's actually asking for a two-foot variance, am I correct in saying that?
That is correct.
Right. As we all see the pictures here, it has to be, the pool has to be removed.
Yeah.
And I don't see where it's gonna be any different, if it's, I don't see any difference in this with the pool. He's making it better, improving the neighborhood, he's improving the house. So for those reasons, I say that.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
I will second the application, or second the motion, rather, to approve the two-foot variance along the eight-foot stretch of the pool that has been designated for a bench. I believe the applicant has made substantial effort in, and he has explained at length the efforts he's made to look at alternatives. Unfortunately, they haven't been successful to fall within the code, but given the, what I would say is a relatively non-substantial variance request, which has been minimized by the applicant, I think he satisfies those prongs of the test. I don't know that the, the benefit can be achieved, and we've discussed that the benefit cannot be achieved by any other feasible means in terms of moving the bench to the other side that you run into the porch or the deep end of the pool. I don't believe that it's gonna have any impact on the neighborhood. There has been a pool located at the, relatively the same location, and this will only benefit the property, won't have any additional adverse effects on the neighborhood. While the application is self-created, that's not dispositive in this, in this particular case, for those reasons, I would move to approve the variance.
Motion has been made, and seconded, is there any discussion on the motion? I would ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Berry?
Yes, for all the reasons stated.
Mr. Leclerc?
Yes, for all the reasons stated.
Ms. Osterlich?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yes, for all the reasons stated.
Mr. Green?
Yes, I see this as an improvement, and since it's essentially covering the same footprint, I vote yes.
Mr. Hope?
Yes.
Chairman Goodman?
For the reasons which have been stated, I will vote yes, the variance is granted. Thank you for your time, sir.
Thank you for your time. Have a great evening.
Thank you. We could call the next case?
You wanted, sir?
I, well, did you wanna keep them?
We kept one stat.
You wanna keep that, yeah.
You can keep, yeah.
Mr. Green's keeping his, he can keep it.
You don't mind, dude?
No, I'm keeping it.
He has a scrapbook.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The appeal of Padma Adi of 124 Comanche Trail, Niskuna, New York, for variance from Section 220-4 and Section 220-18B 1A of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna to construct a six-foot fence on the property noted above. The property is located in the R1 Low Density Residential Zoning District. Section 220-4 defines through lots as having two fronts or frontages. The lot is a through lot as it has frontage on Comanche Trail and Van Antwerp Road. Section 220-25B 1A permits the maximum height for fences located in the front and side yards to be four feet. As proposed, a six-foot high fence would be located in the front yard between the house and Van Antwerp Road. Therefore, a two-foot fence height variance is required. Nine notices were sent out. I received one response and a county referral. The response was a phone call, response to 124 Comanche Trail for variance for six-foot fence. Mr. Stephen Gregory of 120 Comanche Drive stated that he has no issues with the six-foot fence installed. The county deferred to local consideration, no significant county-wide or intercommunity impact, and they also added an advisory note, existing utility easement restriction should be reviewed to ensure the fence does not impact easement rights.
If the applicant could please come forward and state your application, summarize it, and what efforts you've made in preparing this.
Sure. Good evening, good evening, everyone. So I'm Padma.
Can you talk into the mic, Sam?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. I'm Padma Adi from 124 Comanche Trails. Basically, the house, we have two front yards, I heard, so basically, I'm requesting a fence of six feet for the backyard, for two reasons. One is safety, and one is privacy too. Safety because anyone can, the Van Antwerp Road, anyone can walk, and it's very see-through when the cars are going past, the noise, not only that one, any people can, between two, it's not only like three to four feet, any can walk into our backyard, especially during the summertime, we would like to sit, relax, and when it gets dark, no, no, we don't even know, anyone can come inside into the lot easily. So that's the reason I'm requesting.
Have you considered a four-foot fence, which would meet the code?
It doesn't really help us. Basically, I'm, four-foot fence, anyone can jump easily, and it's not, and the privacy also is not, especially during the summertime, we would like to use it. As I'm getting old, I would like to use my backyard more, that's the only request.
Ms., Ms. Adi?
Yes.
Am I pronouncing that correctly?
Yes, yeah.
I, she, have you had a survey done of the property? Oh, this is a copy of the survey. It doesn't reflect where the easement is on the property. Or maybe I'm not seeing it. But I guess my question is, you're asking for a six-foot fence along the back property line, correct?
Right.
So the sides of the property, no, no fence at all?
I have a good neighborhood. The reason I'm asking only in the backyard because it's like totally strangers, anyone can walk through, neighbors have good, everything is okay. I'm just asking only the back.
Well, I, I guess, I understand what you're saying in terms of you, you're requesting a six-foot fence in part for security reasons.
Right.
Anybody could just walk around the edge of the property onto your property, right? It's not gonna preclude them from walking right onto your property, is it?
I don't want to do, I want to be open to the neighbors. I don't, they have been there for a long time, so I'm, just wanna do it from the back.
I'm just trying to have an understanding of what the benefit that you're trying to achieve, would, would, would the primary benefit be security, or the primary benefit just a buffer to shield yourself from the traffic on Van Antwerp?
I think both.
And there are no current fences along either property, side, side property line, right? There are no fences there?
Uh, no.
Is there any vegetation between your property and Van Antwerp Road?
Yeah, little bit. Again, during the wintertime, it's like see-through, there are no leaves at all, it's very clear. Anyone can easily walk through, yeah, during the wintertime.
So you were more concerned with people walking through in the summer?
Uh, no, wintertime also, more in the wintertime, I'm worried, yeah. But during the summertime, somebody can come inside and stay there, like, you know, can hide also. And during the summertime, we like to keep the doors open, we'll go in and out, like, I like gardening a lot, I go in and out, you know? Most of the time, we don't even close the door, so that's other reason to.
Ma'am, have you considered arborvitae or some type of natural barrier that you can plant along?
I did look into it, it's very expensive, one of the trees which are good size, you know? I'm 50 now, by the time I wanted to do the small ones, I don't think the trees are that big, so when I was looking for five feet, they're 120, 140, so that's expensive for me, so.
How much is your fence?
Hmm, I really, it is less than that, I think so. But definitely, when I see, look for the trees, which are good size, which is like six feet or something in there, they're very expensive. And the, we have the clay soil, it's the, it's not that good there. I don't think they will survive. I did plant few of them in the, in, closer to the backyard. I don't know if they'll survive or not, the, the trees, because of the clay soil.
The, it, along that whole border, along that side of Van Antwerp Road, there is a, there are some trees and bushes and whatnot.
Right.
How far from the road do you propose to put the fence?
Whichever you people, whatever the correct size, I mean, I don't want to do use anything like that, as long as at the end of my land, I can do it at that place.
Well, the reason I say is there's a very, the, the plows go through there and throw the snow, and the issue is, is, you know?
You can suggest me the correct one, I can go with that one, whatever you people say, which is safer for everyone, I don't know.
That's not up to us, we don't put the, you know?
So I think one of our neighbors did it, like, maybe I can do in the same way. Second house from us, somebody did it, so I can follow the same thing, maybe. They've been having for a long time, so.
And how high is the fence that they put up?
I haven't, I don't know exactly.
Do you think it's six-foot, or do you think it's four-foot?
It is six feet, yeah.
So I have some information about this because I live across the street. There is a six-foot fence variance that has been granted along that side of Comanche Trail to John and Karen Spinelli. That variance was granted prior to the time that I was on the ZBA, so at least 10 years ago. And just for a point of information, if you're looking at this house directly to the left, there was an application for a six-foot variance by the Karach family that took place when I was on the board, and that variance was denied. So I guess that's all I know about that.
Just to jump on that point, for the 2003 variance that was approved for a six-foot fence along Van Antwerp Road for 112 Comanche Trail, going north on Van Antwerp Road, you know, looking left at 112 Comanche Trail, there's a berm that follows about midway through that property, and then it drops off. So the deal was, there would be a four-foot fence erected on that berm, and when the berm dropped off, that would go up to a six-foot fence. So that was a pretty unique situation.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Adi, what is the, from Van, the, the road on Van Antwerp, what's the grade? Does it slope down to your property?
Yeah.
So if it were a four-foot fence, I'm just wondering?
Even then, it's not like good size. It's not that huge difference, is there? Not big slope, slant slope, yeah.
A slight?
A slight, yeah, not that much.
Quick, can I request that aerial photo that you had right there?
I'm just requesting for safety and privacy. I would rightly enjoy, I would like to enjoy, that's the only reason. Haven't done all this time, I don't know why I feel, but I would like, at this age, I would like to relax.
And how long have you lived there now?
I think 15, 17 years, maybe, yeah.
Have you seen a change in traffic on Van Antwerp Road in that time?
It's a little bit more, I feel now, definitely it's increased now.
How about in pedestrian traffic?
Uh, I think it's more. During like Halloween time, I see more people walking, during, yeah. Just, it's very, very close to the backyard, to the road.
Any other questions from the board?
Just, you mentioned you have two front yards.
That's what?
Right.
I came to know, later, I didn't even know about before.
So the side that you're putting the fence on is on Comanche?
And, no, Van Antwerp.
Van Antwerp.
We use Comanche, I'm sorry, we use Comanche as a front yard for us.
So your driveway is on Comanche?
Correct.
Okay. And assuming you didn't have, assuming you have a backyard, your backyard will be where that fence you're putting?
Correct.
And your neighbor, you said they have a fence? And your neighbor, you said they have a fence, are they to your right or left?
The neighbors are second house from us, not.
Second house? So you're skipping one and then they have a fence. Is that the one you mentioned, 112?
Gregory is immediately to her right.
So that's 112. And the one we didn't approve was?
Immediately to the left.
Immediately to the left. Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
And there are no other variances for six-foot fences along that stretch other than 112?
I, correct, to the best I know, yeah.
I'm looking at this aerial photo, and it looks like there is vegetation along Van Antwerp. How dense is that?
It's not that much dense. As I said, you know, during the winter time, it's very, very clear. And people can, like, you know.
112 had the variance for the full length of the fence, but there was another property that has a variance for part?
No, 112, as I understand, had a variance for part of the property because there was a change in grade, the other part of the fence is four feet, and the immediate neighbor who put an application in was denied.
Yes.
Does the immediate neighbor have a four-foot fence?
Right now, I don't.
Does the neighbor next to you have any fence along the back property line? Did the neighbor immediately to your right or immediately to your left have a four-foot fence?
Immediately, no.
Do any of the neighbors in close proximity to you, along the same property line, along Van Antwerp Road, do they have four-foot fences?
Maybe, I'm not sure. Not the second, maybe third to fourth house, maybe, right? I'm not sure.
Yeah, I'm not sure of that either.
Yeah. I'm confused, is 112 the Spinellis that you were talking about?
Yeah.
So that was approved a long time ago?
Yeah, probably like in 2005.
I think you said 2003 it was approved? And that's at the time they were building the houses, it looks like?
Yes.
Based on the architectural?
Yes.
Ms. Adi, I'm, just those two feet, what does that two feet give you? Is it the slope of the property? Can you describe where somebody, if they're standing or driving in their car, what they would see into your house if you had a four-foot fence versus a two-foot fence, or the noise?
I think when we sit in the family room, especially in the evening time, they can see very easily. I don't like to put curtains or anything, I'd like to more sunlight into the house.
But that's with no fence at all?
Even with a four-foot fence, they can see. The road is much, much higher, the house is down. The road is higher.
Other questions from the board?
I'd like an opportunity to review the aerial photograph, which is currently being reviewed by another member.
Yes, okay. Yes, we'll make that part of the record. Any other questions from the board? Ma'am, do you have anything you wish to add?
I just would like to, requesting to have the six-foot fence, that's the only requesting I'm asking, because it's our backyard.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard for or against the application? Hearing none, I would ask if any member wishes to make a motion? I'm going to make a motion to deny the variance. The reasons for my motion to deny the variance is that, is a change in the neighborhood in that the only one that has been approved was when there was a, was only for part of the fence, and there was a grade change in the property. We have other occasion to consider a variance of this type for this block, and it has been disapproved. This fence would be directly on Van Antwerp Road in what the applicant views as her backyard, but what the statute views as the front yard. And the scheme of the statute is to not have six-foot fences in front yards along the public accessways and public roadways. The request is for a 50% higher fence than would otherwise be allowed by the statute, and it is self-created. One of the reasons that the applicant has put forth is that it would prevent people from walking through the yard, and since the applicant is not looking to fence the side yards but only this back line, it really does not have any effect of keeping people from walking from Van Antwerp Road into the backyards of this lot and then across the applicant's backyard. So for those reasons, I will move to deny the variance. Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded, is there discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I would ask if we could call the roll.
Mr. Frere?
I'm going to vote yes on the, on the motion, although I acknowledge, being very familiar with this area, that the concern of having your backyard, what is essentially your backyard, the statute calls a front yard, is open, very much so, to Van Antwerp. My concern is that the purpose of the statute in terms of not wanting six-foot fences in the front yard, of which this uniquely is a front yard, is because of the visual issues that it creates. And given the fact that you have, do not have a heavily wooded area, you do not have buffer in between that, it does create a visual issue to have a six-foot fence there that people can see. Certainly, you could, I think, achieve somewhat of what you're trying to do by using a four-foot fence. But in this case, the fact that it's just bordering the rear of the lot does create somewhat of a visual anomaly, and I think that, I think that it does create a problem with the character of the neighborhood.
Thank you.
For those reasons and the reasons already stated, I vote yes on the motion.
Mr. Latif?
I'm going to vote yes for all the reasons stated.
Ms. Osterlich?
I, I do struggle for the same reasons Mr. Frere discussed, in that it's treat, you're treating this property, this area of your property as your backyard, despite it being a legal frontage, is very frustrating. And, but in light of the fact that we really do rarely give these types of variances for all the reasons stated by Mr. Goodman, I'm going to vote yes.
Thank you. Mr. Daley?
I vote yes.
Mr. Green?
This has been another very difficult one for me also. I have, however, I am, I am constrained by the particular facts of this case and also a sense of a consistency that I wish to follow in the way that I have voted in other similar such matters. I am not unsympathetic to your particular situation, but I am going to vote yes on the motion also.
Mr. Hope?
Again, without reiterating, I'm sympathetic as well. It's an unfortunate situation, how the property is laid out, and I do appreciate the legitimate concern you have bordering Van Antwerp Road in the, in the way that your property does, but I, for the same reasons Mr. Green alluded to, in terms of maintaining consistency with how I voted in the past, unfortunately, I have to vote yes as well.
Chairman Good.
For the reasons I previously stated, I will vote yes. Ma'am, thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
We could call the next case, please.
The appeal of Riaz Mahmood of 40 Victoria Court Niskuna, New York, for a variance from section 220-18B3B and section 220-13 Schedule IB of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna to construct a 10-foot by 25-foot koi fish pond on the property noted above. The property is located in the R1 Low Density Residential Zoning District. Section 220-18B3B states that the required side yard dimensions for major accessory structures shall be the same as applies to the principle of as defined major accessory structures or detached accessory buildings or other structures in excess of 120 square feet. The pond at 250 square feet is a major accessory structure. Section 220-13 Schedule IB establishes the minimum required side setback as 20 feet. As proposed, the pond will be located seven feet from the side property line. Therefore, 13-foot side yard setback variance is required. 10 notices were sent out, one response. I received a response from 46 Victoria Court. Thank you for your letter of May 3 informing of the board's consideration of side yard variance request for Mr. Riaz Mahmood. The proposed massive koi fish pond and the intended surrounding fence leave little room between the structure and my property line. In addition, such a large reduction in the side yard setbacks will have a negative impact on my property value and the aesthetic view of the entire neighborhood. I am strongly opposed to this proposal. Although the edge of the proposed pond is seven feet away from my property line, I believe the proposed pond requires a surrounding fence, therefore, the entire structure and accessories leave very little setback and much less than seven feet from the property line. This is unacceptable. This variance request is, if granted, will also have negative impact on the integrity of the entire neighborhood, which is in a low-density residential area. Niskuna Town's 2013 Comprehensive Development Plan calls for encourage exterior maintenance, renovations and/or additions to existing houses stock that are congruent with the appropriately scale to fit the existing house style and age. I respectfully request the board deny the request. By Anping Lu.
If the applicant could please come forward and summarize your application, reason for it, and how you made your considerations to ask for this variance.
My name is Riaz Mahmood. I moved 40 Victoria Court, Niskuna, last September. I'm here asking for a consideration for koi fish pond. My setback to the rear is more than a requirement, to the front is also. So to the side is seven foot that I put. Actually, I thought about it, I can make it to 13 foot by narrowing it down, and that's the minimum for the fish to survive through the winter. 10 by, 10 by 25, that's what I like to have because of the survival situation. But I can narrow it like a foot or two width-wise, so that way, my neighbor, Mr. Ong Ping, he won't have a seven foot to his border, he will have actually 13 foot if I narrow it and move the pond toward my house little bit.
I had one other question for staff. Looking at this, there's a swimming pool on this property as well, correct?
Right.
And there's a shed and a fence. How are we with to count for number of accessory structures?
The fences are associated with the structures, so they're close enough to the structures to be part of that structure.
So it's not a separate structure?
Correct. Pool is on, the pool fence is on the border of the pool, so it's considered, both objects are one structure.
Okay, and that was, so we have a pool and a shed?
Yep.
And then this would be a third accessory structure? And we only need a variance if we have more than three?
Yes, four, yeah, three is the limit.
Mr. Mahmood?
Yes.
The pond, I see a large area for, reserved for children to play. Why could the pond not go immediately behind your house?
I actually like to have it behind the house, but because of the easement, I'm not allowed.
Well, the easement looks like it's in the back of your property, you have a pool behind your yard, right?
Right, behind the pool, that's where I would like to have it, but that's easement.
Well, I understand that behind the pool, there's an easement, but immediately, looking from Victoria Court at your property, it looks like there's a fairly large area that your shed kind of sits on at the back left-hand corner, and then there's a reserve for children to play. It looks like it's a larger area than.
I have small children, I have like five children, and I need a little bit of space for them to run around instead of keep playing video games and.
Sure, I, I appreciate that. So, so that area has been marked for the children?
Right, five children, that's only limited space, so.
Just stay with me, so there's no impediment other than the, reserving the area for the children to play, to putting the pond behind your property? You wouldn't need a variance in that situation, correct?
Right, right.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mahmood, looking at the, at the aerial view of your property, I see the large, like, the pool with patio around it, and then another structure, is that the shed?
That's not the shed. That's the previous owner had a basketball court.
So is that a cement slab there?
It's, yes, it's the cement, she put the cement for that.
So is that the area that is included where it's written in another sheet, reserved for children to play? Is, does that, do the children?
That's part of it, yes. Besides the cement, there is only so much space on the grass-wise. So that, that, including that grass, grass is pretty much long toward, by the other side of the house.
Is there any amount of area that's just grass within this area that you'd written, reserved for play, that would fit the koi pond?
The, behind the court?
Behind the court, and that's not part of the easement?
That's, yes, behind the, as soon as the court, basketball court, and that's where the easement start.
And that's for underground?
Before, before that, between my house to that.
Court.
Court, there is a little bit of space. I would guess six, seven foot.
Is that enough for the koi pond?
No, six, seven foot, then the fish wouldn't survive.
How about this strip along, I don't know, I guess, looking at the house to the left? Is that enough for the koi pond of grass right here?
I think so, but that the same, same distance to the both neighbors. So either I go this side or I go the other side, the same distance. So I, in that case, I choose the other side because this side, at least with the court, so they can run if they want to run.
The utility easement, those are for buried cables?
I believe so. But I would like to have it in the back. That was my first choice.
So what is required in a koi pond? What do you have to do?
To survive the cold, it requires, that requires 10 foot, 10 foot wide, four feet deep.
And how's it lined? Is it lined with clay? What, how do you?
No, there is the plastic thing you put it on, and there actually, it's not, it's, I want to make it looks nicer. It's not just digging it and throw some fish in there. I want to make it really nice to give some character to the.
So there's going to be substantial amount of excavation that's going to be required to do this?
To, right, like four feet deep, so I do need a machine to dig it.
And what kind of fence are you putting around it?
Either picket, the privacy, nice one, wavy, nice privacy, picket or whatever type is there, four foot high it must be, especially for my safety or my own children, I have to have that.
And is that concrete pad in the back, like, is there currently basketball being played there, or is that just a remnant from an old basketball, basketball pad? Nobody plays basketball there anymore, right?
Sometimes.
Is there an actual net up? Is there a basketball net up?
Yes. Yes, it's up.
Oh, okay, it is up.
Yeah, it came with the house.
If you will permit me, I mean, I'm intrigued with the idea of this pond. And I'm wondering, in the wintertime, if it's four feet deep and it's snowing and freezing?
Right.
It's going to be, the fish aren't going to have that much, they're going to have less...
Right, that's why they are saying four feet will make them survive. If I go less than four feet deep, they will not survive through the wintertime.
And are they, the koi fish, as it's a type of fish called a koi fish, K-O-I fish?
Right. Those are the beautiful colorful fish that you see in aquarium. Not to eat, that's like a pet. The children ask for it, so I try. If you consider, we honor. If you don't, it's no, no problem, we still honor.
Mr. Mahmood?
For children to be happy, that's all.
Can you just describe the use of a koi pond? So that everybody understands what it, can you liken it to another recreational activity? Like if, if some, one person asks for a pool to be put in, how is that similar to enjoyment of your property?
The fish, the pond, you know, looking at the pond, looking at the water, it gives you some character. You feel, you maybe sit down evening time and just looking at the beautiful fish or swimming pest. And you feed them, you teach the kids to care of it, just like a pet. You enjoy your tea.
Is it a place that could be used as a place of contemplation in, on your park, on your yard? I mean, would you go to the pond to relax? Could you go to the, could you go to the pond to look at the fish and relax?
Yeah, in my front, by next to the, next, front of the pond, I have a space. Back of the pond, I have a space. You can sit, put a couple chairs and have a tea and enjoy it.
Do you heat the pond all winter long?
I'm sorry?
Do you put heat in the pond?
No.
How do you get, how do you get food to the fish that you don't? They hibernate over the winter?
Right.
Okay.
Thank you, that's, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
But if, if they survive, if they are four feet, otherwise...
Mr. Mahmood, where did you, where did you get this information that you need four feet for koi to?
Through online and through the... JRT Aquarium, I spoke with a gentleman.
Well, a couple of things. One is, is I have a very good friend who has a koi pond. The koi pond is probably three feet in diameter and is, you know, in his, off his back porch and his koi survive.
That's fine.
No, I'm just, I'm just saying, I would check your information. But my bigger concern is, as I look at the layout of your house, you have a very nice pool, which is surrounded by a fence.
Right.
You have what, this, this X basketball court. Looks like you have a little bit of porch area off your backyard, outside the back of your house. To place a koi pond where you've got it placed seems, it seems counterproductive in terms of how you would use your house. You put it in a side yard, which is right, right next to the neighbor's house. And it's, I mean, while it may be, it's not like it's off of a back porch or a deck or a patio where you could sit in these places and enjoy it. And again, that's, that's...
I would love to, that's why I would, I tried on the back, on the back, but easement is holding me.
Right, no, I understand that. And there are circumstances which have made it difficult and you want to have room for your kids to play. But the problem is, is where you've got it placed requires a variance.
Right.
And one of the criteria we've got is, is that there is going to be an environmental effect. And one of the criteria is there's going to be a substantial change to the neighborhood. And I don't know, given, and I don't know, the person that, that called in or the person that wrote in is where in relation to this property?
46.
Right next door.
Next door.
Well, there's two next doors.
Yeah, but it's, it's the side of the house where the koi pond is.
So the problem is, is, is while I actually agree that I think it would be a nice accessory, maybe not this large, but a nice accessory to your house and certainly would be great for your kids to take care of, the location has me troubles. And the location is what requires you to be before us to get a variance. So while I, you have a number of kids and I think that, that they would benefit from this, the location is an issue for me. So, and that's one of the criteria I have to look at because that's why you're here for a variance, just let me know. Okay?
Yes.
Mr. Mahmood, if I'm standing on the street and you've just described a small picket fence around it, what, what's the koi pond going to look like? What am I going to see? Am I going to see the picket fence? Can I see the koi pond?
If you just, from the street, you will see the fence. Maybe if you look well, you might able to see there's some pond. But if you go closer, then you will see. Because through the, the fence and so much distance, you only can see so much. If there was no fence, then you would see it clearly.
Other questions from the board?
Just a quick question, Mr. Chil. Does it have an electrical pump?
Yes, it will have a pump, so water circulate. I will have maybe few flowers, the water flowers to make it look nice. I just don't want to dig it and throw a bunch of fish in there.
Yeah, I'm just wondering about the water, so...
Yeah, there will be a small fall, falls that will be inside the, and also the water circulate, there will be a pump.
Okay, so there's a pump with a filter?
Right, with the filter, just like swimming pool, but a smaller version.
All right, just curious, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions from the board?
Yes, actually, one more. Just working off what Mr. Frey brought up about how to enjoy it from where it's located. Is there any access either from the house? Is there a door on that side from your house? Is there a gate from the pool?
There is a gate from the pool. If you open the gate and you make a right turn, that's where the pond is going to be, if you consider.
Where is the gate? Is it towards the corner of your house, up that way?
Toward the pond side, the west side.
And is there any sort of walkway or any, or is it just grass?
Just the grass.
Other questions from the board?
Yes, how would you drain that pond in the wintertime?
You just leave the water, water freeze up.
You don't drain it at all?
You don't drain it. You just leave the water and maybe two foot or so, it will be freezing and underneath will be, that is still able to swim. The water will be liquidy.
Mr. Mahmood?
Yes.
Just for clarification purposes. So if I'm at Victoria Court looking towards your property, koi pond is going to be on the right, correct?
Yes.
You have an entrance, you have a front door along Victoria Court, correct?
Yes.
And then your garage is to your left-hand side, correct?
Yes.
And then you're going to have a back door to the property as well? There's a back door?
No.
How do you exit? Can you exit the property through the rear of the home?
From rear?
Yeah.
Yes, to the pool, as you go to the pool.
And looking at the, your property from Victoria Court, that, that entrance is going to be on the left-hand side of the pool, correct? The back door is on the left-hand side of the pool?
As if, as I walk from front, as if I'm standing at the rear, the pool is the right-hand side.
Okay, so if you're looking at the house, you're looking at the rear of your house, the pool is on the...
Right-hand side.
No.
If you're standing in your backyard, looking at the pool, at the back of the house, the pool's on the left?
Then, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So, so the door is to the right of the pool, if you're looking at the...
Or does the door open up into the pool area? Does your back door, back of the house? Does it open up into the pool, the fenced in?
No.
Okay, so it's on the right, the outside of the pool?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, and then there's, there's no other entrances or exits to your property?
No, just the grass and open, open, you just walk out.
So, so what you indicated that there is a gate, your, your pool, the fence around your pool has a gate?
Right, the pool gate.
Okay, and does your pool gate have, are there two gates on the pool or just one gate on the pool?
Two gates, she has two gates on two side.
Okay, so there's a gate on either side of the pool?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? Sure, do you have anything you wish to add?
No, that's it, if you consider.
Anyone in the audience wish to be heard for or against? Sir, if you could please come up to the microphone, state your name and address?
Well, this is an awkward, okay, let's see. Liu, I live in 46 Victoria, next to Mr. Mahmood. It's, this is an awkward position. I want to be a nice neighbor. He has a friend. So I'm sorry, this just say, you know, there's a certain thing, fact I want to talk about. I live in this neighborhood since 2001, when this starts. So I lived here for so many years. I see people come, moved in, moved out. Riaz moved, bought his house in September, but didn't move in until this year. Yeah.
No, we bought it in July, no, August, and we moved in this year.
Okay, yeah. And anyway, where do I start? I see people move in and move out. And then no one mess up the side yard. It's a nice setbacks and good distance. So most people build things in the back and even on the side yard, more toward the end. So I think this is, people like this neighborhood, you know, value this type of uniformity. So, and if you don't look at it as a crowded yard, so that's what I'm saying. So with this massive, you know, 25, 10, it's really big. It's like swimming pool, really big. And so I have concerns because the road has a grade. I am on the downside. So when you come into the, I think town has a, probably have, the survey has the record. I don't know how, what is the slope is. At least when I see the property of Mr. Mahmood, you have a few, a couple of feet above in the foundation. I have, I draw this, so I, I have concerns about this water. I draw this cross-section of the two houses. And this is the proposed pond. This is his pond, this is my pond.
Yep, here, sir.
This is my house. My house, since I'm on the downside, is pretty steep. So the builder, well, they didn't do good, well, actually, I asked. My window, my basement window is already underground because they put like this base shade of things. So lift the ground, so the water can go, goes down. Even that, before I, the downpour, the water stayed there. So I finally have, they build underground drainage goes away. So there's a, between the middle of the yard to the front, it was great. So the, the down, underground drainage goes all the way toward the front. So I don't have water pot there. So it's just like one, one year or so, my windows there already have a crack. So obviously, there's a dent over there. So you, you can see here, it's a pretty flat. I, I don't have, it's not a scale. But then from somewhere, even before my property line, there started as a scale and go up to his house. The pond is going to be here. So it's more than, so there's something going to be do with that part of the problem. Either lift up or deep, dig deeper than four feet. So there is a problem with this massive pond. I see, my friends have a pond, it's one-third of the size. It's the same koi fish. But, but the depths is required. So that's my big concern with water. Although the water may go front, but I'm on the downside, so this is the situation.
Can we keep this for our records? Thank you. Any questions?
Is this, are you the same person that wrote the letter?
Yes.
Just a quick question for you. If you can come back, please. He did mention that he's going to change it to 13 feet from the side of your property. Would that make any difference to you?
So what is the variance?
Right now, he's looking for seven feet from the side property, which I assume it's your property. But he did mention that he's going to change it to 13 feet. Right, does that make any difference to you?
Or will make it smaller, maybe like...
Well, yeah, if I understood the applicant correctly, he is going to move the pond closer to his house, but not necessarily make the pond dramatically smaller, is that, that was my understanding.
To give him more...
To give him more border, I would like to move it like toward, like as I applied, I had seven foot to his border. And I had 12 foot myself to my house. So I would like to flip it. So instead of giving him seven foot, I would like to give him 12 foot. Plus, I wanted to narrow by one foot the pond itself. So that gives him 13 foot and he will give me seven foot toward my house.
So you would need a seven-foot variance in that situation as opposed to a 13-foot variance, correct?
Right, right, correct.
And you're only, you're shrinking the pool by one foot, at least in length, correct?
Correct. As the Mr. Frey said, that if you think that, that I don't have to have it that much deep, I'm okay, I'm easy.
I make no, I express no opinions as to what the...
No, I'm just saying, I'm easy, it doesn't matter. If, if somebody said, you know what, you can make it smaller and fish will survive, I'm fine, I have no problem. I spoke with Mr. Ong Ping. I talked to him about that too, before I even applied. I told him what I think, what I think, what he say. First, he said, okay, maybe he didn't understand. But when I, when he got the letter, then he get a little bit confused. But still with respect, we are good neighbors, it's no problem.
Okay, I've got a question about your application then. So once this board grants a variance, then it's in place. There's no incentive for you to make the koi pond smaller at that point. So if what you're saying to this board is, you may be able to make it smaller and it will still be okay with you, then the options are, you can, so far, you now have a, we're going to amend so that you're asking for a seven-foot side yard variance. But if that's not what you want, if you want, if you think you can have less, that's the kind of thing that this board needs to know to make their decision. Because as you can understand, once they grant a variance, then there's no incentive for you to do anything less.
Right, no, I'm, I'm willing to work out. It's no problem, it's only pond, it's no big deal. So if he's satisfied with, I'm going smaller, I'm okay. If he's satisfied, I'm, what I like to have it, it's okay. If fish survive, that's all I need. If fish survive, I'm good.
So what I'm trying to clarify is what you're asking this board to do tonight? So are you asking them to make...
I would like to have, give him more... I would like to have, give him more space. So I would, instead of seven foot, I would like to give him thirteen foot.
Right, but so.
By doing that, I have to cut my pond size.
Mr. Mahmood, I guess the concern is, have you actually laid out how much farther towards your house you can actually bring the pond and what the smallest possible dimensions of the pond are? I mean, I guess the concern that, that being raised is, if you were given a, hypothetically, if you received a, a seven-foot variance and then you weren't able to do what you wanted to do, I guess that's the caution there.
No, there is nothing, just if I move, if I, so this is his house, this is my house, this is the pond, so I give him seven foot right now. So if I move that seven to me, he will have more space.
And then how much space are you going to have?
And then I'm going to have seven, and then I'm going to put a fence around it and that's it. There is nothing else for me to do or I, I have no desire to do anything, it's just my house and few feet, the pond, that's all.
Have you spoken to an engineer as to how close this can be to your house?
I did not, I did not.
Does anybody have any idea how close you could put something, a pool to a house?
Uh, it's a good question.
From an engineer standpoint?
A pond.
It's like a small pool.
Yes.
We've been getting a lot of rain.
Uh-huh.
If that pond filled up, it's going to go to an overflow.
Right, there is a creek behind all of our house. I can put a hose and take it there. Right now, his house and our, my house, there is a slope like this, so in between our house, the border is down. Our, both houses are up, so what the rain falls, the water, where the water goes right now, either goes to the street or goes to the creek because it's down. Both houses are up and the bottom, the middle point is down. I can, the creek is always running and actually he's the one who also clean the creek. So.
I'm sorry, Mr.,
Pop that out.
Mr. Daley, I have a quick question for Mr. Twitty. Without deciding or making any reference to whether this grant, variance should be granted or not, but if it were in fact granted, would it go to Andy to make sure that all of the water was contained on site?
We would bring this to engineering, especially considering the water and sewer easement in the rear of the property, we would certainly bring this to engineering for approval, if it were to be granted.
So, so I, I think that frankly, the water, to someone who's not at all technical like me, seems like a legitimate, a totally legitimate issue. There are some mechanisms within, if that were the only remaining issue, that would be something that engineering could look at to make sure that the downhill neighbor wasn't directly affected by overflow of the koi pond.
Any other questions from the board?
I, I would just like to hear back from the neighbor to see what he thinks, if you don't mind.
Sir, if you could come up?
I'd just like to hear back from you, what you heard and what you think right now because Mr. Mahmood is willing to move it away the side from your property and I'd like to hear your, your feedback on that.
I, I feel better.
Do you still have any concerns?
I still. It's a, one of the things of the rationale, as Mr. Frey talking about, say, this is the outside of the swimming pool and it's, it's, you know, with a gate, with another gate, you know, if something happened to the children, it's hard to, to, and it's not, it's, it's hard to reach. First you need to get out of the swimming pool gate and then get into the gate of the pond, the fence. So that's one thing. So I even talked to him, what if you put the pond in the place of the basketball court? Of course, that, that's a, would take some actual cost. But it's a so much better location. And I also don't mind if the pond is moved more toward the end rather than next to the house.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I would ask if anyone wishes to make a motion.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to move that we deny the request for a variance for the following reasons. I, I think the idea is a great idea. I think the placement is, is poor, to be honest with you. It's, which is what necessitates your need for a variance. You have a very limited side yard distance from your house to the side yard encompassing almost the entire setback. It's a twenty-yard side yard setback and based on my reading of your diagrams, I'm not even sure that, that what we're talking about is feasible. You're going to have a, a direct impact on your neighbor and you're going to have an impact on the, the, the character of the neighborhood. You're going to possibly have an environmental issue because I'm not sure that you can place this in that location for a number of the reasons that people have talked about, surface water, groundwater, things of that nature. I think that the setback is, the, the variance is going to be substantial. I, I hear your numbers, I don't think that they're accurate because from the edge of your pool to the side yard, the property line is twenty feet. The side of your house sits out even farther than the edge of your pool, not the edge of the fence, the edge of the pool. And you have to take the width of this pond and from the width closest to your neighbor to the side yard is your setback now. And I don't think your numbers jibe with what I'm looking at. So it is going to be substantial. I think there are a number of different places. Again, I think it's a great idea. I have friends that have them. I would love to have them, but unfortunately, where I live, the heron would eat every single one of the koi. So the issue is, is there are alternatives to achieve what you want to achieve. And I think if you investigate making it much, much smaller, you can achieve the same purpose by having koi in a decorative pond in a location that does not require a variance. So I wouldn't abandon the idea, I would begin to look at places. And if in fact, one of your purposes is to have your kids take care of the koi, feed the koi, enjoy them, I would suggest placing it in an, in a location, which I think there are a couple in your backyard that I see, which may take a little bit of the kids' play area, but again, you're achieving the purpose of involving them in the koi. So don't abandon the idea, change where you're going to put it, make it smaller, talk to some other people, because I can guarantee you, you can probably with a three or four foot or five foot radius, place a koi pond that doesn't require what you're looking to require, maybe only a couple of feet deep, doesn't require a fence, and I think you can achieve the same purpose. So for those reasons, what you've proposed here tonight, I'm moving that we deny, but please don't give up on this, just look at, at changing what you're doing.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
I'll second that for all the reasons just stated.
Is there a discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I would ask if we could call the roll?
Mr. Frey?
Yes.
Mr. Latif?
Yes, for all the reasons stated.
Ms. Osterweil?
Yes, with a note that I really do appreciate how well you guys as neighbors work together. I'm very respectful, thank you.
Mr. Daley?
Go ahead.
Mr. Green?
I'm also impressed at the civility of both of you gentlemen over a very intriguing yet difficult issue. I am going to join in the suggestion that you continue your search for an appropriate spot for your koi fish pond on your property. It sounds like a wonderful idea, but the placement as proposed tonight, even with the amendment, still causes me concern. And that I believe that while there are many positive things, it would indeed potentially change the character of the neighborhood in the side yards, the vistas that people see, looking at not only your house, but your neighbor's house. So given all of those factors and for the reasons stated, I vote yes with regard to the motion to deny, but don't give up on that koi pond, it's a great idea.
Mr. Hope?
Yes, for the reasons previously stated.
Chairman Goodman?
For the reasons stated, I'll vote yes and I'll echo that they don't give up, but find a place that might work better. I want to thank you both for your time this evening and I believe that was the last matter on the agenda. I'd ask if there's any other business? If there is none, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Vote.
Second to that.
All in favor? Motion carried, we were adjourned, we'll be back next month.